I will love them. I know I will.
They are the ones you wanted, right?
They are the ones. I voted for both of them. Yes, I did. I voted for both of them. Yep, I did. That is. Yes. Well, that's all of us. Pretty much. I mean, I... Oh, that's like my glasses. Oh, God, please. Excellent. Thank you.
Maybe that was because this is graduation.
May or... And finally, gun at the school didn't. Like I used to tell kids when I'm at school. I was a big student, so I had to come back. Didn't they drop me? I had to come back so I could still...
Now I'm terrified of them.
Maybe you're not going to study.
Straight. Elementary. Elementary.
Okay, we're getting ready to start. Start the meeting. I will call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education, which was duly noticed on April 17, 2025 through posting a notification to the press in accordance with Wisconsin statute 1984. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Millard.
Thank you, President Murray. It's my pleasure to introduce Amanda Springer, the principal of Edison Middle School. Amanda started her career at the Janesville School District in 2000, where she spent 15 years as a seventh-grade teacher and four years as an academic learning coach at Edison Middle School. In 2019, Principal Springer had the opportunity to be an academic learning coach at Franklin Middle School until the principal position opened at Edison. Amanda has a Bachelor of Science degree from UW-Oshkosh and a Master's degree from Cardinal Stretches. Principal Springer, who do you have with you this evening?
It is my great pleasure to introduce Lily Foss. Lily Foss is one of our seventh-grade students at Edison that consistently contributes to the school community and makes Edison a great place for students and staff. When I talked with her teachers, they absolutely recognize that she is a wonderful, well-rounded individual who is kind and respectful to everyone. And I quickly learned that it didn't matter which staff member I talked to in sixth or seventh or even eighth grade, that there are three things they love about Lily: her sense of humor, her work ethic, and her enthusiasm for learning and what she brings to the classroom. So, on another note, she is a very talented athlete. She plays hockey for the Madison Mavericks and lacrosse for the Oregon Panthers. So, I have no doubt, as she continues in the school district of Janesville, we will continue to hear about the great things she's doing, both academically and athletically. I also want to say that she was on high honors for the first three quarters of her school year. So, ready?
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, Lord of Liberty and Justice for all.
Stay right there for a minute. So, it's my privilege to recognize two of our longstanding school board members, who this is their last meeting. First of all, Kathy Myers was first elected to Board of Education in 2013. Kathy is currently Chair of the Legislative Committee, served as Board President from 2021 to 2023, Board Vice President from 2016 to 18. Kathy is currently on the Personnel Policy and Commitment Committee and also served on the Finance, Buildings, and Grounds Committee. And Mr. James Millard, first elected to Board of Education in 2016. Jim served as Board Vice President from 2018 to 2023, and currently Jim serves on the Building, Finance, Buildings, and Grounds Committee. So, please join me in a round of applause for these two wonderful individuals. Does anybody wish to make a quick comment? Or should we move on? Go ahead.
I just want to say thank you. I came onto the board in 2018, and both of you have been true leaders, always willing to give us your experience, your wisdom in leading the district and our families forward. So, I just want to say thank you for being there when I was new, being there for me to feel open to ask questions when I didn't necessarily know the answer. Both of you are true leaders in this community. Thank you for your service.
Okay.
As the Chair of the Finance, Buildings, and Grounds, I thank both of you for just enriching the committee and the questions that you've asked and working with me and really digging in and helping make the district just a better place. So, thank you very much.
Wonderful, too. And I just want to add that I truly appreciate your friendship and your honesty with me. And I think most of all, when I see you two, is your dedication to our staff. You've always been an advocate for the staff here, and we'll all be grateful for that. It's wonderful. All right. I think Liz has got some comments later in her committee meeting report, so we'll move on. Unless you guys want to share something? No? Jim, no?
Can I just say a second?
So, thank you very much. It's a little bittersweet, but I just want to say that it has... I used to... People would ask me if this isn't a thankless job, and I'd say, "Not really." It's actually, it's work, but it's good work. And the reason why it's good work is because of the people that we work with. And so, thank you very much. It has been a joy.
Thanks, Kathy. Go ahead, Jim.
I'll say something nice. Okay. Actually, I just want to add a little bit more to Kathy's. One thing I think this board has always been, at least since I've been here, was we may not always agree, but we always are friends, no matter which side our vote fell on. And we all cared about each other in the Janesville School District. So, thank you.
Well said, Jim. Thanks, everybody. Congratulations again, and thank you. Let's move on to 3.2. How about a motion to adopt the 22... April 22, 25 Board of Aghish Education Agenda.
No. Herta.
Can I do a voice vote on this one?
You do need to do a roll call. We will do a roll call.
Okay, we're doing roll call tonight. Take a little extra patience, because, believe it or not, that's Michelle right there.
Hi, Michelle.
Commissioner Ardry?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomashausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayward?
Yeah.
Commissioner Herta?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Millard?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Paul?
Yes.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the safety message.
Thank you. That's the way it doesn't bend well. So, you know, every meeting for a few years now, quite a few, and some in our committees, in that we've done a safety message. And part of that safety message has always been kind of dangerous in that, and the dangers we see driving, walking, and in the area. But one thing that's very important that sometimes we do miss is our immediate area. Keeping it neat, organized, and be aware that we can create our own problems, whether here, at school, whether at home, or where we work otherwise, or anywhere we go. So, the big thing is pick up after ourselves, move things out of the way so people can get through, and do whatever else it takes to be organized to make sure that we don't get into trouble in the wrong way. Thank you.
Thanks, Carl. And thanks for being here today, and we love you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, gosh. Well, people don't know me. I cry over burnt toes, so don't... All right. Student presenters from Arise Charter School, Valerie Hilker. Hi, Valerie. Come on up. You're the next contestant.
Not Valerie.
That's why she was slow getting up.
She's replacing the original student. Okay.
All right. Hi, my name is Leela Speck, and I'm here representing Arise. I would like to share how Arise has completely turned my life around. I was not the best student in middle school and going forward from that, especially with the COVID craze. During and after the pandemic, I fell behind in all my classes. I wasn't on track to graduate on time, but now I'm an honors student. The difference? Simply put, it's the change in environment. Brick-and-mortar schools are filled with kids, some of whom are incredibly distracting, no offense. With Arise, I don't feel like my deadlines are being cut short just because I spent most of my time attempting to tune out some of the noise around me. I'm able to take plenty of time on assignments that I'm struggling with. And on the other hand, I'm also able to quickly complete assignments that I understand well and can spend the rest of my time on the tougher ones. On top of that, all of the instructors are helpful and inspiring. Whenever I have questions, my teachers are there to assist and cater to my learning style instead of the learning style of 100 other students. I didn't really have such a constructive environment in person, but with so many people around me that understand the way I learn, I'm able to excel in an educational environment in which I struggled before. To sum up that long rant, I went from borderline failing to getting straight A's in about six months. The reason I was able to accomplish that is because of Arise. All the teachers are wonderful. The course content is easy to digest, and I'm able to complete my work at my own pace and without distractions. Arise offers a learning environment that is so distinct compared to your standard public school, and it is a blessing to kids like me, whose brains are wired differently. Oops. Thank you.
And next, from Rock River Charter School, Michelle Hodges. Is Michelle here? Hi, Michelle.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Holsman and School Board Commissioners. My name is Michelle Hodges. I'm 17, and I'm a junior at Rock River Charter School. I'm currently in the GED Option 2 program. I am also pregnant and in the parenting program. I chose to come to the Rock River Charter School because I was struggling a lot at my main high school. I was having rough attendance and wasn't able to find the motivation to complete my assignments. I heard that Rock River Charter School was a good school to help motivate you and help you succeed. Since the school is decently small, I felt like I'd be more looked at than overlooked. I decided to apply back in April of 2024, then I got a response in January of 2025. The GED Option 2 program is a program that offers a regular high school diploma by taking four GED tests and doing about 40 or more assignments in two semesters, sometimes less or more, which depends on how far you were before getting into the program. I like this program because of the class size. The whole GED Option 2 program is about the size of a classroom at Craig High School. They also break down classrooms with no more than about 10 to 12 people in a class, but normally less. I've been in this program since January of this year, and I am working very hard to graduate early. I have some assignments left, as well as two tests left. Once I complete all of that, then I should be able to graduate by the end of May. All of the teachers in the program, such as Robin, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Weigle, Mr. Winchell, and Amy, have helped me succeed in every subject and made me feel like I could succeed at anything. My plans for after I graduate are to go to UW-Rock and then UW-Whitewater to become a social worker. Then I want to work, as well as going to college, to be able to support myself. Now, I would like to talk about all the good things happening at Rock River Charter School. Rock River Charter School's current enrollment stands at 219 students. We are on pace to have another record year of graduates, as 117 students have already rang our bell and met graduation expectations and anticipate another 50 to finish before the end of the school year. Our overall success rate remains strong at 95.56%. The fall waiting list for placement at Rock River Charter School stands at 160 applicants between the four programs. Rock River Charter School has had a busy couple of months. We held the first-ever Books and Bingo event, where students and their families had the opportunity to enjoy Family Game Night of Bingo with a chance to win fabulous gift baskets donated to us by Project 1649. In addition to the gift baskets, every participant had the opportunity to pick out a brand-new book to take home and keep. Additionally, Rock River Charter hosted its first College Night. Representatives from Beloit College, Blackhawk Technical College, UW-Whitewater at Rock County, and Gateway Technical College spoke and provided information to students and their parents. We are already in the process of planning for another College Night this coming fall. On April 17, we took interested juniors and guardians on a field trip to tour the UW-Whitewater campus. We are continually trying to find ways to help students leave Rock River Charter School with a solid plan for after graduation. Additionally, Rock River Charter School took all of its students bowling at Rivers Edge Bowl. This was a great way to send students off to spring break, and fun was had by all. Still to come, the parenting students will be taking a trip to the Madison Zoo. We are looking forward to spending the day with our children as they explore the zoo and we learn ways to interact, engage, and teach them about what they are experiencing. I would like to take this opportunity to thank some of the people in programs/organizations that help Rock River Charter School thrive. They include our Rock River Charter School Board, Project 1649, Blackhawk Technical College, the Adam Silhav Foundation, Edgewood Nurses, the Women's Fund, and many local businesses and companies who came in to speak with us. Additionally, we would like to recognize and thank you, the Janesville School Board and the School District of Janesville for their continued support of Rock River Charter School and for students like me. Finally, I would like to invite all of you to our graduation celebration that will be held on Wednesday, June 4, at 6:00 PM in the Craig Auditorium. Thank you so much for your time and for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you tonight.
Thanks, Michelle. And from Rock University High School, Dylan Bongle. Did I say that right, Dylan?
Yep.
Thank you.
Good job.
Good evening, Commissioners and Superintendent Holsman. I'm Dylan Bongle, and this would be the second time I'm standing here before you guys. I'm 16. I'm currently pursuing a degree at Blackhawk Technical College, and currently I'm 24 credits in. I saw BT... I saw Rock University when I was kind of at my worst, and I ended up going there and seeing that with a different environment, I could thrive. We currently have 91 students, and five of our seniors are graduating with their two-year, or we have one graduating with a certificate. We have a lot of opportunities that we're pursuing. We have a Rock County internship that two of our students are pursuing, and we have a couple people who are volunteering at the Janesville Historical Society. We are opening up new classes and allowing students to go to Craig and Parker to pursue classes like arts, welding, really anything we can't provide. But we are starting to provide a FIED course and getting a new instructor. That FIED course will be held using the BTC Track and Field and their weightlifting rooms. So, I think that we have built a community at Rock University, and it's a solid community, a very friendly environment, and that has allowed me to grow and build my character. I thank every one of you for allowing Rock University to thrive, and we'd like to invite you to our open house, which is on May 1. We'd love to see you there. Thank you very much.
Outstanding. You guys can go if you want. Otherwise, you can stay all night. Look at them go. All right. Moving on, we have one citizen comment. Maria Kane.
That's me.
Hi, Maria. Just state your name and your address.
Yes.
Thanks.
I'm Maria Kane. I live at 205 Apache Drive, Janesville, Wisconsin. Good evening, School Board Commissioners and Superintendent Holsman. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Maria Kane, and I'm an art teacher in the School District of Janesville. I proudly served this district for 20 years and am married to my husband, who is a district administrator for 13 years. As an employee of the School District of Janesville with a spouse in the district, there are no current benefits for an employee that has to opt out of insurance to be covered under a spouse. It has come to my attention that when one spouse declines the district's health insurance plan, it raises questions about the efficiency and potential cost savings for the district. Through my limited research, there are close to 43 married couples in the School District of Janesville that equates to 86 employees. Of these 86 employees, that includes maintenance, support staff, teachers, and administrative positions that equate to a tremendous amount of dedication and years of service to this district. My husband and I have 40 years in this district. I would like to better understand the reasoning behind this policy. Specifically, I have a few questions. Cost-saving measures: How does a district save when an employee's spouse declines the offered insurance coverage? Is there an analysis or breakdown available showing how much the district reduces its insurance expenses? Cash-in-Lew option: Is the district considering or could it offer a cash-in-Lew option for married employees who opt out of the district's health insurance? There is a policy and benefit provided to employees who turn down district insurance and elect to go on their, excuse me, spouse's insurance plan, which is called Family Advantage Health Plan. Is there an alternative for FAHP to offer married employees? 43 married employees, couples in this district, are not eligible for FAHP. They are unable to earn the benefits that include additional coverage on top of primary health insurance, effectively creating a 100% coverage plan for most participants. FAHP reimburses co-pays, deductibles, and coinsurance up to the annual out-of-pocket maximum, and there's no premium contribution. Additionally, employees enrolled FAHP receive a monthly payroll bonus of $50 per member. In wanting to attract and retain highly qualified staff, I believe this is something that needs to be addressed by the school board in our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Maria.
Yep.
Okay. Moving on to 4.1, I need to consider a motion to approve April 22, 25 Consent Agenda.
So... Second.
So, motion and a second.
Okay, we will do a roll call, voice vote. Commissioner Herta?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Millard?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Paul?
Yes.
Commissioner Ardry?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomashausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayward?
Yes.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item 5.1, recognition of winter season state qualifiers.
Hey, Clayton.
What's going on?
Good. All right, good evening, everyone. I'm here representing both Parker and Craig tonight. I think Ben had a couple more home athletic events, so I got the lucky one. I was the lucky one to come here today. So, I'm excited to be here tonight to celebrate the many Parker and Craig student athletes who qualified for the state competition and several of our School District of Janesville-recognized winter sports. Their achievements are just one example of the incredible work happening within the Athletics and Activities Department. I know our district athletic director, Jim McLowry, shares a lot of updates with you at the PPC meetings. He shares success stories, current projects, and everything in between. But from personal experience, I can tell you that this winter was not only full of exciting competition, but also marked by meaningful progress. Some examples of that include we were working diligently to launch our new athletics website at both Parker and Craig. We are reinforcing... We were reinforcing alignment between middle and high school programming, and that work continues this spring. Strengthening partnerships with the communities, youth organizations, collaborating with our middle school athletic directors during our data retreats, and engaging all of our coaches, middle school and high school, in intentional professional development. We are proud of the momentum that we have built and even more excited about what's ahead. Once again, on behalf of our entire Athletics and Activities team, we want to thank you all for your continued support. So, with that, I will start and turn it over to Coach Shane Fleming.
Alright, hello, I'm Coach Shane Fleming from Parker Wrestling, the Big Eight Conference Champion Team this year, so that was good, you know, we hope to stay there, we got there. And these three athletes made it to the state tournament this year, which is outstanding. Getting three to state is a pretty big achievement, so I wrote this down, I'll just read this so I don't start rambling. So I just wanna take a moment, reflect on what an incredible season that it was for our wrestling team. We've seen a lot of growth, a lot of grit, and a lot of greatness on and off the mat, and a few individuals have truly set the by high for what it means to be a part of this program. We're gonna start with Katie Kent. Katie's just a freshman, she's wrestling at one hundred and eighty-five pounds, and she took second place in the Big Eight, and she qualified for the state tournament. That alone is a huge accomplishment, but what stands out even more is her drive to improve. She's the kind of athlete who stays after practice, asks questions, and looks for ways to get better. Katie's not just satisfied with the strong start, she's determined to finish even stronger. With that kinda mindset, I have no doubt that we're gonna see her on the podium next year. She's working, going to club wrestling and stuff this summer, so I know she's got a little taste of that success, and she wants to keep it rolling, so congratulations Katie. And with that, we got that for you, alright. Then there's Dominic McGuire, sophomore, one hundred and twenty-six pounder. Dominic finished first in the Big Eight, qualified for state, and it didn't happen by accident. This summer, he went all in, extra practices, wrestling camps, offseason tournaments. His work ethic has been nothing short of outstanding, and now he's gotten a taste of success also, and now he's hungry for more. Dominic is doing everything right to make that next jump, and I can't be more excited about where he's headed. So he's doing the same thing, he's doing the offseason wrestling, trying to get better to take that next step. We seem to be able to get guys to qualify, and girls to qualify, we just can't get to that winning on the podium yet, so that's the next goal is to win. So that's, I know it's high standards, but that's where we gotta get to. So, Dominic? Alright, and then finally, we're gonna say goodbye to our senior here who's left a legacy that's going to be hard to match. Carter Wesley, wrestled at one hundred and ninety pounds. Carter took second in the Big Eight and qualified for state. And throughout his career, he's been the cornerstone of this team. He's our team MVP this year, and Carter has set records for the most career wins at Parker. That's pretty amazing, the amount of wrestlers and good wrestlers that have come through that program, and he's what got the most wins ever. So that's pretty outstanding, with one hundred and twenty-two. And then, he matched the most pins in a single season with thirty-seven, but what's more impressive is how he did it. Carter just leads by example, he's not a loud, talkative guy, he just comes in, he does his job, shows up, works hard, doesn't complain, and just wins. He's a quiet force who lets his results speak for him, and they speak loudly. I mean, it's gonna be hard to replace all of those wins, and I mean, he'd line up and go out there, we pretty much figured you got, you know, a win, so that, to replace that's not gonna be easy. So we got Katie, Dominic, Carter. You've made this team better, you've set a powerful example for your teammates, I'm proud of what you accomplished, but even more proud of the people you're becoming through the sport. So thank you all, and let's keep building the program. Alright, Carter.
As we move on, any parents, family, or friends who wanna get a better angle for cameras or anything, come all the way up, stand behind us, you're welcome to do that.
Next, we have Coach Jaegerliner, who is our head gymnastics coach.
Unfortunately, my gymnast that made it to state this year is at a track meet, so she's not here, and her parents are there cheering her on. So Grace Flister is a freshman at Parker, and she scored an eight point four five on her vault at sectionals, and she placed fourth out of fifth. With that vault, the eight four five, its only value was a nine, so she had very little deductions, and it was a really clean vault, and this was the first time Parker High School was able to send somebody to state since 2011. So we were really excited, it was a big accomplishment, it really rallied up our current Viking gymnasts to, you know, to work hard in the offseason and hope to accomplish something next season, so. She was able to place twenty-fourth in the state individual gymnastics meet, and her parents are Gina and Joe Flister, who, like I said, were not able to be here either tonight, so thank you for having me.
Next, we have our head coach, Liz Wilson, and assistant Tessa Nichols to talk about our competition cheer team.
Good evening, members of the school board, staff, families, and community. I am Coach Wilson, this is my assistant coach, Coach Nichols. We're incredibly proud to recognize Parker's varsity competition cheer team for an outstanding season, one that was filled with dedication, resilience, and achievement. This year, our team not only grew in skill and spirit, but we also advanced to state for the first time in fifteen years. Most teams spend five to six months working on their competition routine. We had two routines that we were working on, so what we qualified for state was something that we only had two months to put together. We were one of five teams to advance in the traditional non-tumble large division. Each team received an overall score out of one twenty-five, but there are section scores as well. Our jump score was third in the state, and our stunt score was second. Each of these athletes brought something special to the mat, from leadership and energy to creativity and pure strength. Whether it was executing a difficult stunt, keeping up with schoolwork, or performing full-out, after full-out, they gave it their all. We wanna personally recognize each team member tonight for their unique contributions to our success. We have a team of fourteen, so I'm gonna briefly mention a strength or two. The majority of our teammates are multi-season athletes, so we're missing quite a few of them tonight, but they will still be announced. Lexi Beba, who is one of our seniors, she led the team strong and performed with amazing facials. Nellie Camacho, another senior, always leading the team with positivity and kindness. Brooke Dennis, um, do you wanna hold those? Alright, Brooke Dennis for being such an outstanding performer, facials and attitude galore. Ally Esser, eleventh grade, for pushing herself out of her comfort zone and to perform elite level stunts. Sloan Fellows, tenth grade, for her immense growth in both overall performing and stunts. Ally Flippen, tenth grade, for learning an entirely new stunting position. Nevy Ford, tenth grade, for learning the routine in one week and helping us advance to state. Isabel Glass for juggling both gymnastics and competitive cheer. Chloe Glißendorf, tenth grade, for always having such a positive attitude. Kenzie Graham, eleventh grade, for always being kind and pushing herself in stunting. Peyton Gutzman, eleventh grade, for always being open-minded, encouraging, and resilient. Jamie Hale, tenth grade, for taking corrections and always having a positive attitude. Chelsea Levine, tenth grade, for always thinking of the team and putting a hundred and ten percent in everything she did. Ivy Williams, who was unnamed, our team's MVP this year, thank you for being supportive, always willing to try new things, and being so hardworking. It's been a joy to coach this group of strong and motivated young ladies. They've made our school proud and set the bar even higher for seasons to come. Thank you again for the continued support of our program, and we can't see, we can't wait to see what next year brings. Thank you.
With that, we will turn it over to the Cougars, and Coach Volt will start with wrestling.
I'm here to introduce Leo Getchel. Leo had a great season this year, he had a record of thirty-nine and fifteen, took first place at Whitewater, first at regionals, and second at sectionals. Leo's a hard worker in the room. He's coming from his freshman year just being kind of a brawler, till now as a sophomore, learning that wrestling's kind of a chess match. There's actual strategy to the match, work in the clock, work in the mat, work in the out-of-bounds. And like I said, he's only a sophomore, so he's got so much more to go, like there's so much more he can learn in advance, and we expect a lot out of him. And he beat the number nine seed kid at sectionals to qualify for state, which is a huge accomplishment, and we're so proud of what he did, so congratulations to Leo. I've been asked to introduce Coach Walsh. If she'd come up here, please. Ben McCormick couldn't be here, so he asked me to say a few things about Jean.
Oh. Surprise.
I don't know. I probably have better things to say than that.
Jean has served as Craig's head gymnastics coach for the past thirty-six seasons.
Wow.
Right, huge accomplishment. Fortunately, this will be her last season. In that time, she coached hundreds of girls and has been an outstanding leader and role model. For our girls here at Craig High School, under her guidance, her teams have won numerous conference championships, invitational, sectional championships. She has also coached over twenty-five individual state qualifiers, four teams that qualified for state, and three state champions. We wanna thank her for her leadership and hard work over the past thirty-six years, and wish her nothing but the best in the next chapter of her life. Please help us recognize Jean and her outstanding coaching career.
Thanks, I'll be signing autographs after the meeting if anyone... Anyway. Thank you for having us and recognizing our student athletes this year. It's always, it's always a pleasure to come and talk about my girls here when they've made it to state. Our team this year, as a team, we did not make it to state, but we had a really good season. We placed second at conference, and we had a really good meet at sectionals, we had a really tough sectional, but Haley Fugue made it through sectionals on vault and floor, I almost said bars. And she placed, I can't remember the exact placing, but she placed in the top ten at state on both events, so, good job Haley. Haley is a, this is her second individual qualifying as, as an individual to state, or she qualified with the team the last three years, and she's a four-year letter winner with us. She won second team All-State on vault, and she will be competing at the Senior Showcase Invitational, it's kind of a national end-of-the-season meet for seniors, in Florida with her teammates, Raya Arizola and Maya Neverman. I've been honored to be Haley's coach for the last four years, and appreciate everything she's done, so thank you Haley. Oops, I can't get these off here. And it's my pleasure to introduce our cheer coach, Molly Burglin, sorry, then I say it wrong, I've asked her three times. Molly Burglin and our fabulous Cougar cheer team.
Good evening. This year was our first full competition season since my assistant coach Kennedy and I took over the program last year. This competition team has been working together since the summer to grow in skill and develop a routine for their game day competition season. The start of our season was tough, but they never let it impact them or discourage them. They continued to work together, to encourage each other, and to help each other grow and push each other to become better. They finished the season with an entirely different routine than they worked all summer on and started the season with. There were lots of added practices, lots of changes, lots of adjustments, lots of corrections, but this team remained united and positive through it all. They overcame injuries and illness, and in the end, it made them stronger than we as coaches could have ever hoped. Game day, and especially co-ed game day, which is our division, is highly competitive. And while there were teams with more experience, our team never let that intimidate them. They went out and put their whole heart on the mat each and every time. They really began to gain momentum when they brought home the first trophy in four years at Brookfield Blast. They followed that up with a first-place award and third overall in game day at Elkhorn. And then going into state preliminaries was not as easy or as smooth of a transition as we had hoped. Our team got hit really hard with sickness, resulting in changes and substitutions that we were making up until the night before they performed. But, once again, they showed their determination and their heart, and they truly performed better than they ever had. Hearing Janesville Craig announce, and knowing that we would be going to state finals for the first time since 2017, is something that I hope that they never forget the feeling of. They showed up, and they went out, and they performed their hearts out, and we as coaches could not be more proud of each and every one of our athletes. Their hard work and dedication and passion, their commitment to each other and to the sport paid off. And while we are losing two incredibly valuable seniors that will no doubt be missed, a large portion of our team is coming back to compete again next season, and we cannot wait to see what they continue to accomplish together as a team. We could go on and on about how incredible each and every athlete is, but I don't wanna keep you here all night, so we're just gonna go ahead and introduce them and let you know that we are so proud of them and we are so thankful to be called coach. Twelve of our sixteen athletes are here tonight, but we'll go ahead and announce them all. Addison Belk, Addison Cowart, Alanis Guerrero, Elijah Royster, Ariana Dean, Chase Spengler, Clarissa Glindo, Imogen Breckling, Kaylee Norland, Leslie Patino, Madison Burry, Maya LaBougan, Olivia Johnson, Rakia Brown, Shania Haron, and Sophia Mervold. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on, five point two, consider approval employee life insurance, long-term disability, and voluntary life insurance plans. Jamie Brown.
Good evening. Excited to be here tonight. Tonight, we're gonna be talking about the School District of Janesville Benefit Renewal. Before we jump into that, I just wanna share just one small story with you, and yesterday the district held a benefits fair for staff. And we had our vendors there, and we invited Sam's Club and the Janesville Athletic Club, Paul Chiropractic, and, you know, employees went through, and I just wanna throw a shout out to Brianna Parker, because she planned the entire thing and from the ground up, so I just greatly appreciate all of the hard work that, you know, she's putting in for our staff, so Brianna, thank you. So, tonight on the agenda, we will be talking about the ancillary renewals, which also is known as the voluntary benefit renewal, dental renewal, and the health insurance renewal. This year, for our voluntary benefits, we did have a couple of them up for renewal. The district paid life insurance will have an increase of the renewal rate, and, you know, you can see that there, the district will experience approximately a twelve thousand dollar increase for the life insurance that we pay for our staff. Our long-term disability will have no increase, and the voluntary life insurance will be subject to a five percent increase. That cost for the voluntary life insurance is paid one hundred percent by the employee, and it's, again, it's based on the age, gender band, so it just depends on the age and the amount that you are enrolling in. So with that, it would be the recommendation for the approval of the ancillary benefits as presented.
So, second. There's a motion and a second.
Lisa, were you the second on that?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
And we're doing a voice vote?
No comments or questions?
No.
We will do a roll call voice vote.
Okay.
Millard?
Here. Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Yes. Audrey.
Yes.
Dahmershausen.
Yes.
Hayward.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Murray.
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Moving on to the dental plan.
Okay. The School District of Janesville currently has our dental plan through MetLife. This year, the district will experience a 3% increase. The district will have approximately a $30,000 increase, while all of the employees that are currently enrolled would see a $4,000 increase. In there, I do have the premiums for the dental, and it is just a small increase.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Don't see any further questions, so we can vote.
Commissioner Myers.
Yes.
Commissioner Paul.
Yes.
Commissioner Audrey.
Yes.
Commissioner Dahmershausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Hayward.
Yes.
Commissioner Herta.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Mallard.
Yes.
Commissioner Murray.
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. Moving on, 5.4, Healthcare Plan.
So, as you know, back in early April, we came and we presented this renewal to you. So, some of these slides will be familiar. So, the district did receive an increase from our health insurance carriers. Dean presented us with a 21.9% increase on their premiums, and Mercy provided us with a 9.9% increase. With that being renewed as is and as presented, the employees would have a $660,000 increase, with 140 of that for the Mercy and $520,000 for the Dean. The district would also see a $1.2 million increase. The plan designed for the '25-'26 school year will remain almost the same due to IRS guidelines. We did have to increase the deductible of the single plan for $100 and for the family plan to $200, and that is just so that we can maintain the HSA eligibility for our If this were approved, this would be the monthly premiums for the employees. I just want to briefly go over what we looked at. You know, when that 21.9% renewal came in, we started looking at options and what can we do? And so, with the district currently living in HMO land where our Dean and Mercy systems are also our insurance carriers, it's hard for Quartz, Anthem, United Healthcare to remain competitive, so they all had declined to quote. The district also looked at the HSA and an HRA, and we wanted to leave that tax benefit available for the staff. We also looked at adjusting the contribution structure. Currently, the district pays 88% of the lowest-cost plan. And so, as far back, I've been here for almost 10 years, and that has been the differential, at least for the past 10 years. And so, we looked at adjusting that, and we found that we would be increasing the cost for our Mercy subscribers while decreasing the cost for Dean. And we just did not feel that that was financially sustainable. And then we reached out to Dean and Mercy for a total takeover and what that would look like. And with the amount of time that we had for a total takeover, we did decide that if we received an offer that had significant savings for both the employer and the employee, that we would then consider it. At this time, we were unable to receive an offer that would make the district want to go to a sole provider this year. And I just want to touch base really quick on self-funded. You know, we presented you with a target date of July of 2027, and I want you to rest assured that you will be going through this journey with me. So, anytime that I am learning things, you will be kept up to date as much as possible. So, know that we will all kind of be going through with this together. Some of the key takeaways, the district continues to contribute 88% of the lowest-cost plan. The district cannot sustain these large increases from Dean. We did look at other options. As a reminder, if our enrollment with the Dean Health Plan falls below 20%, they do reserve the right to decline renewal. And then again, that targets self-funded date of 7/27. Therefore, it would be the administrative recommendation for approval of the health insurance benefit plan as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second? Any further discussion or questions? Go ahead, Liz.
I just have, I have a couple of things, but for the Dean enrollment, if it falls below 20%, that's for this year, right? That they could, or are they locked in for this year? They have to provide coverage for anyone that signs up, even if it's below the 20%?
Correct. We will still have Dean for the '25-'26 school year.
And just as a reminder, if anyone is looking at this and wondering how in the heck Dean is so much higher than Mercy, that is not a choice the district is making. That is coming from Dean, and those are the numbers that they are giving us, what they will renew our programming. Just so, in case that comes up, because I think it's really important, how those numbers can be so different that that's the choice from those providers and what they're offering us.
That is correct.
And then, we listened to an employee tonight speak about the coverage for married employees, and while none of this talks about any programming, that is something that we have talked about just recently suggesting that definitely that's something that we can dive deeper into. We just haven't done that. Those questions are coming up really in the last couple of days to us. Certainly, the district has talked about some of it before. Some of it may have been before my time, and so likely that's a conversation that PPC could be diving deeper in and looking at options to make sure we understand. I just want to make sure that everyone knows if you're wondering, well, what are we going to address that in any way? That's certainly something that I'm going to be making sure that we understand how things pan out for our married employees and just looking at options. But that wasn't presented for us in these materials, and that question, as far as I know, didn't come to my attention until just a few days ago. So, and that takes time to, you know, really pursue options and isn't something that we're prepared to vote on tonight. So, anyway, I just wanted to touch on that. Thank you.
I would also just follow up on that. I did receive another email before I came up here about, you know, couples married in the district, and they indicated that they are not allowed to enroll in separate plans. And I just, for whoever is listening and for you, that that is not the case. We do, in fact, allow spouses to enroll in their own plan. I do know of couples who one likes Dean, one likes Mercy, and so they are split. So, you know, how that message was out there, but I'm here to correct it tonight, that that is not accurate. We do allow staff to enroll in a plan.
I'm so glad. I was meaning to ask that question because I was confused by that, too. I did a little research, not, I mean, just Google research, about employees who are married in the same employer, and it, not necessarily school district, but there are different recommendations out there that what maybe is best might depend on the couple and their health needs. And so, if anyone is wondering or questioning Jamie, like, are we signed up for the best plan for what the district offers for our family? What would you recommend they do with these questions? Who should they reach out to?
Myself or Brianna Parker. Either one of us will, you know, our goal is to get an email out to staff, introduce open enrollment that we will be holding in May. In addition to that, there will be a link in that email for employees to be able to schedule an appointment with us. So, if they do have questions or concerns regarding whether it be open enrollment or what is best for their family, we are happy to sit down with them.
And I'm going to follow up one more. I'm sorry, since we're on this, I'm sorry, Kathy, and it can be your turn. I just thought, you know, okay, I'm going to run the numbers, and there might be married employees who have one child, and it's possible that they could, one of them could be single and one could be a...
Employee child.
Employee child, and their overall monthly premium might be slightly reduced than the family premium. And that's an option for them. It's just a matter of looking at options and deciding what... So, we want to make sure that our employees understand, and open enrollment now, so they could change that if that hasn't been the case for them for the last couple of years, right?
Absolutely. This is the time to do that.
Okay. All right, I'm done.
Anyone else? Go ahead, June.
Jamie, I just want to thank you for do the heavy lifting you've been doing with this and staying positive all the way through it. You do a heck of a job, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone? Anyone else? Oh, yes. Michelle, I can't see if you have your hand up or not.
I do not. I think Jamie has done a great job of keeping us updated all along in PPC, and I really appreciate all the hard work. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Thanks, Denise. Anyone else? Carl?
Yeah, I just have one. I have a big curiosity as I look at the rates between Mercy and Dean. And you're true, we don't know why Dean is presenting these high rates. And the separation of the difference has grown over the years, and that from, they were virtually equal when it started out with our first agreement, and then it moved up. So, to me, I'm looking at this and saying, why would anyone sign up for Dean? I'm looking at those rates. They're terrible.
Yes.
Compared to the other.
Yeah.
So, does that mean that Dean is trying to bail out?
You know, I'm not, I don't want to speak on behalf of Dean, but I would say that based upon the feedback that we have received and the reporting, our medical loss ratio exceeds, you know, the 100% of what is the ideal goal. And so, in, on average, you know, Dean is paying $1.50 for every dollar that we pay in premium to them. So, they're losing 50 cents on every dollar, and so they are trying...
So, what is the rate on Mercy, then?
I'm sorry, what?
What is the rate for Mercy? A $1.50 to one? What is it at Mercy?
So, they can arrange their more, their medical loss ratio is more in the 120s, between 115, 120, so they pay $1.20 for every dollar of premium that we pay them.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Carl. Anyone else? Okay, let's vote.
Okay, roll call vote. Commissioner Paul.
Yes.
Commissioner Audrey.
Yes.
Commissioner Dahmershausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Hayward.
Yes.
Commissioner Herta.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Mallard.
Yes.
Commissioner Myers.
Yes.
Commissioner Murray.
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Presentation to Consider Approval District's '26 through 2035 Capital Maintenance Plan.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Let's take a vote, please.
Commissioner Audrey.
Yes.
Commissioner Dahmershausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Hayward.
Yes.
Commissioner Herta.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Mallard.
Yes.
Commissioner Myers.
Yes.
Commissioner Paul.
Yes.
Commissioner Murray.
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Next, All-Rate Facilities Plan and Referendum. Okay, will this move on?
So, I'm looking at Mark, and Mark's looking at his laptop. So, I know Mark typically provides, Lieutenant Holtzman typically provides these updates. What we've asked, and we had a little bit of a brief update via me to finance buildings and grounds at the last committee meeting, but we really wanted representatives from Epstein New &amp; Architects and JP Cullen. You've seen their faces before. They'll introduce themselves to give an overview of where we're at. Right, there's a lot of work going on, but there's actually, we'll say, no physical construction work going on at this time. And then really, this is somewhat of a precursor. Our two representatives here will be providing an update at a forthcoming principal meeting. I believe it's around May 1st or so, off the top of my head. So, I'll turn it over to Tori Schultz from EUA and Mike Johnson from JP Cullen.
Got the thumbs up?
Yep.
Good to go. Thank you.
Well, thank you, all. It's good to see you all again. Mike and I are here, as Dan said, to just give you an update as to where we're at with things. The teams have been working hard behind the scenes to get ourselves ready for this first phase of work coming up. So, just to kind of cover what the two of us are going to be talking with you about tonight, just a little agenda, kind of introducing some of the, you know, broader team that you might not see on a daily basis, talking about where we are at in the overall schedule of things, doing a little bit deeper dive into the construction schedule and what that starts to look like moving forward, and then talking about communications and a little bit of show and tell at the end as to what actually comes of all this work that we've been doing. So, just for everyone's benefit, I mean, Mike and I stand up here in front of the two, or in front of all you, the two of us here, but we are the face of our organizations for this project. And so, behind us, for each of our firms, is a whole host of people. And on these next couple of screens, you'll just see how many people are, have been involved and continue to be involved with these projects, moving them forward, so that we can get to the milestones that we need to be at, when we need to be at those, and then get the projects built in an orderly fashion. So, this is the EUA team that we have so far. There's actually some others that aren't up on the screen that have been involved at various states along the way. But these are the folks that I work with on a daily basis in my office. Mike, similarly, with his team at Cullen, both on the pre-construction and construction side. Mike, I don't know if you want to talk with any of those folks.
The faces, for those that are faculty members here in the schools, Scott Llewellyn and Matthew Steplick have been the project manager and superintendent partnership, going back to the Secure Pathways Projects and the ESAR Projects. In a similar fashion, team members behind the scenes that are making us look good, but newer to the process are Construction Technology and VDC, Virtual Design and Construction. We've been, part of our show and tell stuff is we've been doing some building scanning, which we'll get into later, but it's a team that are literally walking the hallways with a 3D camera and scanning. So, if you're seeing those faces, Noah and Cameron Dakota are some of the team members, and some of Tori's team members as well have actually been walking the schools, and you may see them even coming up this summer, too, or be doing that same process.
That's right. Then, along with the architecture side of things, these are just a handful of the engineers that are also working alongside Mike, the Cullen team, and then the EUA team to make sure that all the systems are thought through and that we're bringing good quality design to the district. So, all those people doing all this work since the referendum passed in November, from EUAs and Cullen's standpoint alone, not even adding in the time spent from the engineers, we have so far spent over 300 hours in meetings, both internally and with representatives from the district. Our teams collectively have spent over 175 hours on-site going through the buildings and investigating all the dark corners and tunnels and all sorts of spaces. We've invested over 1,300 hours in design work to date, and Mike and his crew have spent over 120 hours working through budgets just to make sure that we're maintaining where we need to be in the budget process and that costs haven't gone sideways.
Right. And that, some more context on that. Right, and that, some more context on that. This pre-construction effort so far has only been at Wilson, Jefferson and here at the district office, right? So we're gonna rinse and repeat this process, kind of in a three to five school increment through the pre-construction phase.
So this is a slide that I know you've seen before, but we wanted to bring it back again just to update it with, with progress for the projects we have currently underway. So as we talked about before, we have three distinct phases of the design work, that's schematic design, design development, construction documents. At that point in time, we hand the drawings off to the Cullen team, they move into construction and completion. So as you may remember, we're already underway with the documentation work for the high school security projects. That's actually work that was funded through the two thousand and twenty referendum. So that work is, is actually through the construction document phase. In fact, as of last Friday, we've sent those drawings to Mike and Cullen to start the estimating and the bidding process. Right behind that is what we are calling the first phase or Phase One A of the more recent referendum work that was passed last November. So that has just, that will, as of next week, cross the threshold from design development into construction documents. Later this summer, we'll start the Phase One B process and start schematic design and then move that forward through its incremental stages. And then next January, back to square one with Phase Two, start with schematic design and do that over and over again till we get through all the buildings. So this just takes that same idea and puts it in a little bit different context. I know we've shown you this before. If you can imagine that, that you're at the line, or today's date, somewhere right in the middle of that first dark purple bar for high school security, as, as we're getting to the bidding and construction stage, that's where we are. And so we're kind of, you can kind of plot that line down through Phase One of construction work. We're in that design phase right now and, and come the end of the year, we'll be transferring those documents to Cullen for bidding and construction. And then we'll start on bid package two and bid package three from there. Just so that you're aware, as we talked about, the Craig and Parker security, that was work that came out of the two thousand and twenty referendum. We are in bid package one A, bid package one B, the, the next three schools will be starting in July. And then two, bid package two and three from there. So you can see which schools are in which phases, which bid packages. So you can have a better understanding of that.
So the, the year dates, right, looking at bid package one A, November of twenty-four to June of twenty-five. So this slide represents the big picture durations of the design phase, right? Not boots on the ground, not building, but the design phase. So on that previous slide, where we had a, a darker bar and a lighter bar, right, that next slide is a a more detailed version of the design phase of it, and then if, like where you were headed to the next couple of slides.
So as we transition from design into construction, this starts to, to spell out the construction durations from, from the prior slide, so you can start to see how the, the, the work that's in the two thousand and twenty referendum, the security package, and then the Phase One starts to move forward into construction.
Yeah, I, so, right, we've been living and breathing this for quite a few months, so when you see bid package one, but in the previous slide, we talked about Phase One A and B and you're like, well you guys, you got a, you got a one and an A and a B. So in the design phase, we have split the six schools, Lincoln, Jefferson, Wilson, Parker, and, and those, we have split them into an A and a B. From a resource standpoint, it is just too big of a volume to try to design and engineer six buildings. So we've broken it into a, a six-month cycle of the first six months is A, the second six months is B, in the design bucket. In the construction bucket, we will be quote-unquote breaking ground, right, starting the work on all six of them at the same time. And then that process that we just talked about rinses in repeats in twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. But in that same concept of a design phase versus construction phase, so I hope you thoroughly are all as confused as we are. Is that, is there any questions on that?
I do have one question based on what you said. When you look at that construction sequence, the slide you're on right now, and you look under bid package one, June twenty-twenty-six, and all six of those schools, even though they're split up in, between one A and one B, this is when you're breaking ground, but this is the breaking ground of the operator, of the capital referendum dollars from November, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Can we, thank you for the confirmation. Can we kinda, I remember previously we had some type of ceremony, you know, when this happened. I think that would be really important for the community support of that referendum, if something happened in June of twenty-twenty-six, when they did sledges, just to show the appreciation of the support. I mean, I, I'm a planner at heart, but June twenty-twenty-six, something should be on a tickler on a calendar.
I, yeah, right, the
Got that, Patrick? Okay, thank you.
Right, that, that first image on the slide, right, was our ceremonial wall breaking, I think it was at Lincoln Elementary, so we hear you, we'll we have a marketing team that would love to do that as much as you would.
I just think that's really important for our community because they supported the referendum and it was not an easy referendum to pass, considering all of maybe one, not two, questions on the ballot, so I think we would all like to celebrate that win.
And I, I don't know if, you know, the, it's worth, worth noting, but there is work that's actually happening this year yet, from a construction standpoint. So that is, you know, those security projects were funded from prior referendum, as well as some kind of behind-the-scenes maintenance work that the district's taking on themselves, so. While Mike and I aren't involved with that, there is referendum-funded work that's actually starting this calendar year.
We can take some cues from the core team as that queues up here in the next few months, if they're need, if we wanna do some kind of ceremonial ribbon-cutting type, or not ribbon-cutting, but, yeah, we can check into that.
I think that just sparked another idea in my head, so you, you might wanna quit talking. But it is the passing of the, the past referendum and the referendum that we did in November, it's all about a partnership. I mean, Forward Janesville really helped us in their partnership with that, so I would want to include them as well in any event or ceremony 'cause it was a team effort for both referendums.
Yeah, I, I have a question that doesn't come, doesn't seem to cover here, and I'm kinda curious. One of our charter schools is at Blacklock Tech. And somewhere, they have to be hardening Blacklock Tech to protect against any problems. Has that conversation happened and would some of us, would the school district be liable for some of that cost?
That is a very good question. We haven't had those conversations, but we can certainly dig into that a little bit further and report back. All right.
I think it's right to me. So
That's you.
We talked earlier about the high school security work, again, right, as much as I would love to invite all of you to, to look at every line item of our schedule, this is intended to just graphically represent and show you that as this process transitions from design into construction, this is a snippet kind of screenshot example and we can go to the next one from hitting the right button. Right, Cullen is the contractor, when we put the project out for competitive bid, we include a schedule for our, so the subcontractors know when the work's gonna happen. And then this, again, right, big bold letters, preliminary, preliminary. But this schedule then transitions into conversations with the faculty at the respective schools in a, in a pre-construction effort, so that each respective school can have an understanding of what the day-to-day activities look like. And Dan alluded to it earlier, that around May first, we have kind of that initial just conceptual kickoff with the faculty of, right, we're not specifically addressing schools there, but it's more of a conversation and education with the faculty of what does this whole thing look like for you, right? Van Buren, for example, doesn't have to sweat things for a year or two versus Craig and Parker are gonna be engaged very, very soon, right? So everybody's kind of at a different level. But again, this is just a preliminary draft kind of example, visual representation of a tool that we use for the, for the bidding process when we, when we get to that part of the work. And then the next couple of slides, right. The previous slide was specific to the high school security. This is just, again, a representation of the Phase One A schools. And if we were to look at, you could see, for example, it says bid package one, group two, and we start to think about things like lead time for electric panels and chiller equipment and theater equipment, you know, right, as that process, or as we move along in that process, in the early part of that, we have to start talking or thinking about and planning for big themes. And as we get further into that, the schedule gets more and more granular and we start coordinating with subcontractors and and suppliers deeper in that process, but we're not there yet, so. Get to the end here, so communication, the last time we got together, I think it was the end of January, and communication, I talked about how we wanted to learn lessons from past projects and grow and improve in our communication process, so we kinda have some major themes. We have the school board, and here we are, it's been a few months, it was January, so we're, we're giving a, a regular update. Finance, Buildings and Grounds Committee, we're meeting with them kind of as requested and coordinating through, I would say, Dan and the appropriate people there. The, the special teams, and don't take that as a tactical military, we're talking about subcommittees within the school, such as the Special Education and Student Services Department, and also the, the security team. One of our themes from the referendum approval was security enhancements, right, improving the, the corridors and security systems within the school district. And moving down the line, the core team is our regular, we meet bi-weekly with Dan and other core critical team members, there's a representative there as needed for the, the special teams and the security. And then during construction, we will have weekly job site meetings, that is, whether it's a school district work or healthcare, regular weekly meetings with the project team is kind of the industry standard for construction, right? Things are moving, especially in a live school, in a live project, in a renovation project, we just, we have to do that. Now, again, we're not there yet, we're not meeting with faculty and principals on a weekly basis. That is a post-design, where it's in that transition between design and construction, so when that starts, if we go back to the beginning slides, it'll be like Scott Llewellyn and Matthew Steplick will be in a job trailer and we will invite the appropriate team members as, as needed. But prior to construction, we will have a kickoff meeting, we'll call it a kickoff meeting, where we'll invite faculty leads and, and principals and get names and set it, and establish expectations and lines of communication, right? So that's going back to just the main title of communication, we wanna do our best at that to serve the district and it's, it's also a two-way communication for the teams and the end-users yourselves to report back to us, hey, this is going great, we need more support here, things like that, so. Any questions on communication? 'Cause I think we're getting to show and tell.
Getting to the end here. So last, last, last couple of slides, we just kind of wanted to share with you some of the things that come as a result of, of all the time onsite and all the design work that, that we've been, been investing. So what you see on the screen here are a couple of interesting technologies that, that as designers and contractors, we've been starting to leverage more and more. The top right image is actually a three-dimensional photograph and, and we have been compiling these on a building-by-building basis. We go around, we scan the buildings and this allows us to come back after the fact and literally do a walking tour of the building. And, and it gives us just that much more information, so that we're that much more accurate and complete with our documents. The bottom-left image looks similar, but that was actually done with a, a laser scanning camera. And so that gives our engineers a much more precise view of things like mechanical rooms and boiler rooms, really tight, critical spaces where they need to make sure that their equipment fits. So these are just a couple of the techniques that, that as contractors and architects and engineers, we're, we're bringing to the district and incorporating in our design work to make sure that it's accurate and it's all gonna fit and work the way that's supposed to. So from those photographs, we actually have to make some construction documents. And we use a three-dimensional modeling program and it's what our engineers do, so this is Wilson, for example. So we've taken and gone through what documents the district has on file, we've gone through our three-dimensional scans and our teams compile these three-dimensional models, which we can then slice and section off into plans and the necessary documents to, to create the, the sets of drawings that we give to Mike to build. So all of the work that we've been doing to this point has gotten us to what you see here on the screen, which we can then turn into working documents for, for construction, so. Just, just a little bit of behind the scenes.
If Tori and I were in the marketing department, we would have this really slick, set-to-music, 3D thing for you, but we don't. So I'm setting a goal for myself for our next meeting to flex our marketing department to put something together. 'Cause it, it is cool, right, from a, all the work that goes behind the scenes, to be able to look at the building and as, as an estimator and a builder, like, to be able to take the SD level floor plans, which are just two-line drawings and correlate that into, oh, to do the work that's on this drawing, let me go look in that room, oh, there's desks there, there's built-in casework there. The ceiling in that room is drywall or plaster or this, right, it allows us, if we go way back to the meetings, it's our job to give you accurate budgets, right, that you can make decisions on and move forward. And this technology just allows us to be that more accurate with the finished product when we get in, when we transition from budgeting to bidding. So it's just cool technology that this little short presentation doesn't probably justify very well, but I hope you appreciate it.
Well, with that, that takes us to the end of our presentation. Are there any questions that we can answer for anyone?
I just appreciate seeing the sausage being made, even though you're leveraging technology. I appreciate that I can visualize what you're trying to get across, so just thank you for sharing that.
Thanks, thank you.
Don't egg 'em on.
You know what's gonna happen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, let's have a Personnel Policy Curriculum Benefits Committee meeting.
All right, that's my turn. Well, first of all, I need to say thanks to Commissioner Herta, who started the meeting for me, our last meeting, as I had a schedule conflict and so we did a little tag teaming, and I appreciate that very much, thank you. Our April PPC meeting, the first presentation of the meeting was a Franklin Middle School PLC team presentation, which was really informative and we got a lot out of it. We learned about, well, several, we know several of Franklin's improvement, school improvement goals, but specifically, we were hearing about the alignment of the work that's being done with the sixth-grade PLC Professional Learning Commit, Committee, or Community. Is it Committee or Community? Community? Community, okay. Related to English Language Arts and their scoring. Their team, which were three of the sixth-grade teachers, along with our Franklin principal, walked us through their process and shared that they were not happy with the results on the first assessments that came in this year. And they went back to the drawing board to investigate how things can change. They shared what their process was, which included instructional shift, rigor of standards, additional mid-unit and formative assessments were created, and an increase with independent practice and some resource changes. The results of all of these changes, they saw a really nice jump, with student scores tripled, of students scoring A, B, or C from their unit one assessment to unit two assessment, which they were really pleased with. They are also working to make sure that these changes can be demonstrated, that students are able to transfer their skill development from the unit test to their STAR scores and then also their Wisconsin Forward exams. And they were seeing now that via their STAR data from fall to winter, that ninety-two percent of students increased on their percentile rank. Average increase for all students on the STAR data was four point four percent, and so that Average increase for all students on the STAR data was 4.4%, and so that's showing them chipping away at moving that needle forward. And then there was also an average increase for students in their target group related to the state report card. So, this is a really important group of student population that they're working with, and that percentile rank increased by 4.2%. So, along with the great work being done to steadily increase student test scores, various student celebrations were held to make sure that we were including our students in the ownership of the growth in that process as well. And so, it was just really exciting to see, for those of us who were in attendance in PPC, just, it was pretty palpable how, you know, positive those changes are. We were excited about, you know, hearing about it. One of the questions that came through is, you know, are we sharing this with other grades and hopefully the other middle schools? Because if one area is seeing success, certainly that translates, you know, we can share that. And the great news is what they're seeing is, you know, well, that's the work that's being done in sixth grade, well, that now is going to travel with the students into seventh grade because they're already seeing that progress. And so, that's great. And if Mr. Schmels from Marshall was here, I was going to ask him a question, because I hear that he's just been dying to be asked a question at one of these board meetings, but he missed out, so I'll have to save it for another time, but I won't bother you tonight from Edison. But for the full presentation, please watch PPC's April meeting, because there's obviously more, and I have more to talk about, but that's located on the district website. Next, we learned about the staffing plan overview from the school year from Mr. Garner, and we saw all of the different considerations that were made, including reducing, keeping our reduced student-pupil ratio in key grades like kindergarten through second, sixth grade and ninth grade and core courses, providing building administrators more autonomy to allocate staff. And we're seeing a pretty steady staffing. Overall, at the elementary level, there will be a decrease in a total of three full-time employment for teaching staff, but I think it's my understanding from that meeting that that reduction really will occur through attrition, so we're not seeing like an elimination of those, of staff. Is that correct?
Not in the elementary.
Not in the elementary. Thank you very much, Mr. Garner. The middle school level, we are seeing an overall increase specifically at Edison in student enrollment, and additional staff are being added there to accommodate that. So, good luck as we are adding those numbers. And at the high school level, staffing is driven by enrollment, but of course, student course signup. There will be one enrollment-driven reduction at the high school level, which we learned about. Of course, those are never easy decisions, so thanks for, Mr. Garner, for working through all of those changes. As a district, another area that we discussed is that we are seeing a rise in students qualifying for special education services in our district. And of course, we are needing to adjust our staffing to accommodate those increases. So, that's just another change that we heard about, and I think that would be a great future PPC presentation. I think we talked about that recently, maybe at our planning session. But for the full presentation, of course, look through April PPC. We received a preliminary presentation for benefits. Of course, we learned about that at our last school board meeting. It was the same presentation, we just kind of were the screener, and then that was what we passed tonight. I want to remind everyone that there was a benefits committee, and JEA also had that same presentation rollout that we had, so there were a lot of different groups working through that. And I appreciate everyone who's been a part of the committee and working with our benefits department to get that information out. We also screened a number of NEOLAs policies that were on tonight's consent agenda. I'd also like to share that we received two agenda requests at PPC, and those were discussed at our last planning session, which was this past Monday. We should expect a follow-up in the coming months related to the middle school, high school retake policy, and PPC will receive a presentation likely in September for the employee evaluation process. Just want to make sure I talked with Commissioner Hayworth about those updates too, just so we know where we are with those agenda requests. And on a final note, I'd like to thank Commissioners Jim Millard and Kathy Myers for their service to our district and community. Commissioner Myers has been a strong addition to the PPC committee for a number of years, and I am most grateful for her dedication and contributions to PPC. We will miss you this next year in PPC, and I feel really sad, it dawned on me at the end of our last PPC meeting that I didn't say anything then. So, thank you so much. You will both be missed here in the boardroom immensely. It's been an honor to serve alongside both of you. Thanks.
Thanks, Liz.
Can I make more contact?
Just to piggyback off of what Liz said, I do want to thank the Franklin Middle School sixth-grade teachers who came and presented at our PPC meeting. When asked if they had ever presented at a committee level or a school board meeting, they had said no. You could see how thrilled they were to be able to share their successes, their trials, their tribulations, and the wins, and all their hard work. So, I really do appreciate Kirk Krueger bringing them here and sharing that celebration, but I also want to thank those teachers. That was really inspiring. I hope to have more of that at some of our PPC meetings.
All right, let's move on to the Finance, Buildings and Grounds.
Yes, and I guess I will note, this was one of the few times that the Finance, Buildings and Grounds meeting was less than the PPC meeting. By 10 minutes, by 10 minutes.
You must have been keeping track.
I always keep track. Now, just, you know, on a personal note, you know, I've talked about safety, and one of the things I shared is I was driving on the interstate, and the front wheel of the rental vehicle I had, the tire came off. I was going roughly about 70 miles an hour, unfortunately, was able to get to the side of the road, and the semi behind me was able to avoid me and all of that. But since our meeting, I've learned that the day before I rented the vehicle, the tires were rotated at a local tire shop. So, I just share that, and I will not share the name, but just for everybody, just make sure that if you are having tires rotated or new tires, you know, it doesn't hurt to ask the question or verify that all of the lug nuts are tight and tacked properly, because in this particular case, a couple of them ended up loosening and just sheared right off, and the tire came off. By the way, you would think this is a rare thing, and a little bit of research throughout the country, it happens three times a day, where a loose tire, or a tire comes off of a vehicle. In some cases, it's tragic. In other cases, it's just, you know, an accident that people have to deal with. So, I was traveling late at night, I have no idea where the tire bounced off to, but fortunately, there was no one, and I think the tire didn't come in contact with another vehicle or anything, because it could have been worse. So, I shared that at the committee and the update as it was from the tire being rotated here at a local shop, so. All right, and the next item, Commissioner Millard, just to reacknowledge him, because his whole time of being on the board, he's been on Finance, Buildings and Grounds. So, just that dedication and service is appreciated. Also had the privilege of having Commissioner Myers, and it was a big thank you to her too. It's always interesting when you have people on the committee involved in asking questions as opposed to just the chair trying to manage it, so thank you both. Much of what we covered has already been covered, but a couple of key items to note. I'd mentioned that debt issuance from the referendum, while that package was completed. And it won't get into the details, but it's kind of broken up into the first piece that we can pay off relatively early if we have the opportunity. The biggest dollars, roughly $139 million, isn't callable. I mean, yeah, it's not callable, so we really can't pay it off early as we would like until it has gone to, I think it's 2034, and then we can, you know, start to pay off it as early, but we can start paying down on it much through defeasance as we have, as we have been with the previous debt. So, just a few items to note. Do anybody know the importance of our action that we went through, the long-range capital plan that we quickly went through and passed? Do you know why we had to do it? Anybody?
You have to.
Well, how? But for years, Kevin, we never did that. No, fortunately, years ago, when we set up the use of Fund 46, part of that is you have to establish a 10-year capital plan, and it has to be board-approved. Well, so it's approved, but it's a draft, and it's going to always be a draft, because it's a living document. And as we do work and consider what's going on, we got to make sure that we update it and keep updating it. So, kudos to Mr. McCray and his team, Dave Farwell, Dave Leeder, Julie Erkey, of working hard to put together a pretty exhaustive plan here by each building, and not perfect, but one of the things it shows is, as we look at school funding and just trying to take care of assets that we have, we come up, as we know, hundreds of millions of dollars short. So, this was just, but at least, we have gone through the challenge and the effort to document where. So, then if there's a benefactor that wants to give us a billion dollars, we know where to go first, so. So, thank you for that effort. And I think it's important to just to share, you know, some of the key things that are coming up. As we look at, you know, what's happening this year from an overall maintenance plan, much of the athletic fields are being addressed. Riverside has been and still will be continuing to work on, softball fields at Craig. The list is long, but at least we're making progress. And thank you, Commissioner Mary, for mentioning Monterey Stadium, but we're not working on it. But as I said, it's a long list, we know it, it's hundreds of millions of dollars. The next piece, and much of the budget development process, so, you know, what's up next? Well, the big thing is, there needs to be a state budget passed. And, you know, as we met a small committee with our state representative, Ann Row, yesterday, it sounds like there may not be a state budget passed like it typically is on a timely basis. So, if that's the case, there are no changes. Things just stay as they are, which, whether that's good or bad, that is what we have. So, that's just kind of a little update there. And then, lastly, oh, we had the long-range plan, and I would say just the one thing, and, you know, kudos to the work that is going into where we're at, and we get a little glimpse from EUA and Cullen, a little glimpse of the work, but then keep in mind, what does that mean here? So, the staff, Dan McCray, Dave Leeder, Dave Farwell, Julie Erkey, as they're putting together the maintenance plan, they also have to interface with EUA and Cullen. So, that's a huge effort, this was a huge effort, so just want to acknowledge them and thank them for their effort as they continue to work through making sure that we are starting to address the planning for the referendum pieces. So, thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Any comments or questions for Greg? All right. Future meeting dates.
Our next Personnel Policy and Curriculum Committee meeting will be on Monday, May 5th at 4:30 here at the ESC. Our next Board of Education meeting will be on Tuesday, May 13th at 6:00 PM, also here at the ESC. And our Finance, Buildings and Grounds Committee is scheduled to meet on Tuesday, May 20th at 3:00 PM, also here at the ESC.
What time?
3:00 PM.
The normal.
Yes.
We're adjourned.
Thank you, Huggins.
Thank you, Michael.
I keep forgetting these are hard.
[laughter]